I've got a call to order the pre-agenda meeting for the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, first meeting of the new year and the first meeting of a new year with a newly constituted board. So, welcome again to Vice Chairman Melissa Neder and Commissioner Scotty Brown. And welcome back to our Commissioner Jean Howe on the end, and also Marvin Norman, who did not stand for election this time around. Marvin is Marvin?
He's not.
Okay. Mr. Norman has been in the hospital recently and should be discharged tomorrow, so everyone can keep him in your prayers, but he will not be joining us this evening. But he may be monitoring us, so we're still on our best behavior, and he'll call you out if we're not. So, Ms. Jones, our county manager, if you'll please run through any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We have two adjustments this evening. One is the removal of closed session, the economic development matter under closed session. And the other item is the addition of item 8.6 under administrative matters, and that is a discussion regarding committee assignments.
Are there any other adjustments? I will mention that I'll have a couple of items under new business to add, just a quick discussion on the register of deeds position in the process that the Executive Committee of the Republican Party of Iredell County will be employing over the next 30 days or so to nominate a replacement for Ronald Duck Wyatt, who has now accepted a position as the county manager of the town of Troutman. So, I'll review that very briefly, and then also a few remarks on our COVID situation, and then that'll be it. Does anybody else anticipate any remarks?
No.
Okay, then that as duly adjusted, we'll have a motion at the 7 o'clock hour to adopt the agenda as adjusted. And there are no special recognitions or awards this evening, nor are there any appointments before the board, although I was going to ask some of our public health folks to give us an update on how things were going relative to COVID and the vaccination regime. Our health director, Jane Hinson, is going to be in a meeting at 6 o'clock this evening discussing that very issue, so she wouldn't be able to be here. She plans to be here two weeks from now to give a full presentation to the board on our status and the way ahead in terms of the vaccination program. But in the meantime, our county manager is going to provide us some hints about that whole process, and we'll go from there. All right. We have three public hearings this evening, all concerning economic development incentives. We've had these matters presented to us in closed session, and we've approved them for a public hearing, and so Jen Bozer should be here at the 7 o'clock hour to share those in detail. All three have to do with expansions of existing industries in the Mooresville area, which is always a great thing to see our local businesses doing well. So, that tees up our administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda, and I'll pass those off to county manager Beth Jones to take us through.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first two items on the agenda are requests from emergency management, and Mr. Green's going to make these requests. The first item is a request to appoint Brian Weatherman with Dominion Energy as the chairman of the Iredell County Local Emergency Planning Committee. And then the other item is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number 32 and accept an open trailer from Mecklenburg County as part of the Domestic Preparedness Region 7 project. Mr. Green?
How are you doing, Kent?
Good, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Chairman, doing well. Hope you are. Commissioners?
Good.
The first item, the local emergency planning committee is a requirement by FEMA if Iredell County wishes to receive certain types of grant funding, particularly in regards to hazardous materials. In the last meeting that I came to you and asked for approval or to apply for a couple of grants, two of those were through the LEPC. So, we're required to maintain an active LEPC. Our emergency management ordinance requires the Board of Commissioners to appoint the chairman of that committee. Brian Weatherman is a dual hatter of sorts. He is a former fire chief at South Iredell Fire Department, and he's currently the field operations manager for Dominion Energy and their gas pipeline. The vice chairman will be Larry Pizorni. He is one of the vice presidents at Iredell Memorial Health System. And the secretary, vice chairman secretary, not required appointment by the Board of Commissioners, will be Samantha Migott, the emergency preparedness coordinator at Iredell County Health Department.
Are there any questions from Mr. Green? Comments? Consent?
Yeah, consent.
Consent. We certainly appreciate the high quality of folks willing to serve on this committee, very well, very good backgrounds, experience, and education, bring a lot to the table in their various fields to this very important committee.
It has been very difficult to maintain the activity of the LEPC because of the online nature of hazardous material reporting over the last decade or so, but we've had a revitalization of sorts and broadening our reach, if you will, into the private sector. We would rather have those folks on it and helping us identify their needs than to us tell them what they need.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Second item is a request to approve Budget Amendment 32 and accept a trailer, which is, in essence, a landscape trailer. It's a six-and-a-half-foot by 16-foot open trailer. It was purchased by Mecklenburg County with domestic preparedness region seven funds. We are a part of region seven with nine other counties. Two other trailers were also purchased in the region. These trailers will be used in conjunction with a UTV that was approved in the current fiscal year to be purchased for EMS through a separate DIPR project.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Kent.
The next item is a request from administration for approval of a two-year contract with county attorney Lisa Valdez, and this contract is similar to the ones we've had in the past. And with her reappointment, the contract needs to be renewed.
There were no substantive changes from the one we had before. That's right. Okay. Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
You can exhale now. And thank you, Lisa. Just a great job that you've done.
Only go get better. You said this about me now.
It really is. She is a jack of all trades and master of all.
Thank you.
With me sitting beside her, she didn't need a raise.
We'll take that under advisement. That'll have to be a specially approved anendum to the contract. Hazardous duty pay.
The next item is a request from the clerk to the board to designate a voting delegate for the 2021 Legislative Goals Conference, and Commissioner Jean Howe has volunteered to serve in that capacity.
Any questions or comments? This is really the guts of what the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is about, because they go through a laborious and inclusive, exhaustive process of soliciting from every county what proposed legislative goal should be, and then go through a number of different subcommittees. They are thoroughly vetted. They are then distilled down. The whole idea is to get the likelihood of all 100 counties buying in to any specific objective, so that when they go to the legislature, it's not just, you know, something being championed by one county. And so, there are a number of proposals where there is controversy between rural or urban counties, or large or small, or struggling or not struggling, you know, just different perspectives. Mountains versus coast versus Piedmont. There are just some issues that they can't get consensus on, so they don't, those don't rise to the level, really, of what they want to be able to project, which is a unified county commission approach representing us in the legislature as they interact with all the different representatives and senators, and, in fact, also the various departments in the executive branch. So, and it's, I want to thank-
Thank you, Jean.
Commissioner Howe for taking this on. He represents, he chairs the region of counties, which how many are there?
Eight.
Eight counties, including Mecklenburg. So, he represents us on a number of different meetings, so I thank you for moving forward and helping us in this particular effort.
Sometimes it gets pretty spirited, discussions.
Yeah, well, it does.
I will note that we do need to appoint an alternate, if anybody is willing to serve as an alternate in case Mr. Howe cannot serve as far as a voting delegate.
I've got no problem with it. I said I have no problem being alternate.
Okay. We'll have Jean as the primary and Scotty Brown as the alternate. Consent?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the clerk to the board for approval of minutes from the meeting on December 15th, 2020.
Has everybody had an opportunity to read through that? Consent?
Consent.
And then the final item is the item that was added to the agenda, which is a discussion regarding commissioner assignment discussions, and there is a handout on the bench before you to help in that discussion.
We've had a brief offline discussion. There are a number of different committees and boards that require or are desirous of representation from the county commission and our board. Generally speaking, as we allocated these some years ago with a track appropriately with the task forces and the subject matter that the task forces that each of us serve on are focused on. So, everywhere, these are broken out based on former commissioners Tommy Bowles and Ken Robertson's assignments based on their task force leads or their membership on. So, I believe everyone is agreeable that those boards that Ken was serving on, that were focused on economic development, that Vice Chairman Neder will serve in those capacities, and those boards that Vice Chairman, former Vice Chairman Tommy Bowles were on will be substituted Commissioner Scotty Brown. There is one exception. That is Marvin Norman is the lead on the Public Health and Well-being Task Force. Normally, he is on the Board of Mental Health and has been on the Board of Health and would be the primary chair on that. But until such time as he is able to clear his schedule and be able to participate fully in that board, and since I have been kind of fully engaged on several items with public health, from coal ash, COVID, and opioids for several years, I'm willing to go ahead and serve until such time as he decides that he wants to bump me off. So, with those assignments, is there any further discussion or comment? Okay, consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Those are the only items for the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. Who would make the motion at the 7 o'clock hour for the consent agenda, so I can note it?
Make a motion.
Okay, you. Call on you, Scotty. We have no announcements of any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions this evening. We do have one appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board. We have one applicant, Carlos Novato, who is presently working with the Boys and Girls Club of the Piedmont as the Director of Development. And Mr. Novato has a very lengthy background, an impressive one, I think, relative to service to nongovernmental organizations, particularly those that provide, you know, services, charitable services. So, I think we're very fortunate to have him throw his hat in the ring. And so, that's the only applicant that we have, and so we don't have a lot of discussion, I suppose. Who would like to make that motion?
I can do that.
Okay. Anybody anticipate any unfinished business? This is not a public comment period. The new business, as I mentioned, I'll go very quickly over the register of deeds appointment process and our COVID status. And now, how about a preview of the county manager's report?
Absolutely. Two things to update the board on. The new mass testing site calendar for January of 2021 is on our website. And again, as we have done in months previous, we are testing every day with the exception of Sunday. So, that is the only day where we are not having a mass testing event in Iredell County. To give you a quick update on where we are regarding vaccination clinics, those are being held based on state and federal guidelines and guidance. And we're in the process of setting up a call center, because our health department is getting inundated with calls right now from individuals that are interested in receiving the vaccine, trying to find out where they are in the priority ranking, as far as when they can receive the vaccine, where to go to receive it, things of that nature. So, we have, as I mentioned in the last commissioner meeting, we have shifted from close contact tracing to vaccination. So, the close contact tracing is now being performed by the state, and we have shifted all of our local efforts towards the vaccination clinics. And we have had a couple of different vaccination clinics. We have two more scheduled for this week. One is on tomorrow, January 6th, and that one is at Stumpy Creek in Mooresville. And then the other one is January 7th at Baptist Church, the Hebron Baptist Church in Statesville. Right now, what- Right now, what we're doing as far as the vaccines, it is the phase-one vaccinations, and that is for the healthcare providers and long-term care providers and residents. And they have also added a second tier to that, which are individuals 75 years of age or older. So, that's currently who we are administering the vaccines to at our clinics. Like I said before, we are getting inundated with calls, so we are in the process, we started today, trying to set up a call center. And once we get the information regarding that call center and we get that manned, we will certainly send out a press release, we'll put it on our website, and we'll try to give people an outlet to get information as far as when and where to receive a vaccine. In the meantime, they can check our website, and any information that we have, we have posted it on our website, and then the state and federal guidelines regarding priority vaccinations, because they have broken it out into a tier mechanism as far as individuals who are eligible for those vaccinations. So, that is on our website. One thing that we want to make sure that everybody understands, this is a drive-through vaccination clinic, so we're asking for everybody to stay in their cars. Please be patient with us. The state's software system, and Chairman Mallory, I'm looking at you because I know you understand the problems that we've had in the past with other softwares like NCFAST, but every county in the state of North Carolina is entering information into one state software for vaccinations, and we're having difficulty with it. Everybody seems to be entering information, and it's very slow to get in. What we're having to do now, we were, our plan was to enter all that data on-site and have it all electronic. We can't get access to the system, so we're having to do paper and then go back and do manual data entry. So, it's taking a little extra time as we go through these vaccinations and trying to make sure we log everything. So, we ask for everybody to be patient and also understand that it is not a one-shot and done. There is a two-step process. So, if you get your first one, you have to follow up to get your second shot as well. So, again, we have information on our website, and once we get the call center set up, we will notify residents of the number to call, and we'll have those phones manned Monday through Friday from 8 to 5 to get more information.
And the state, I believe, is also setting up a call center.
They are, yes.
And I believe our local health department had a process that you could sign up in the sense that if you want an email, that you can give them your email address, and they will notify you of when-
Yes, you can send an email to publicinfo@co.iredell.nc.us. You can send an email to that email address. You have to identify if you are in one of those priority groups. You have to identify, for example, I'm a healthcare worker, I work in a long-term care facility, I'm interested in receiving a vaccination, and can you please let me know when the next vaccination clinic is set up and scheduled, and they will contact you back. So, they do have that that is set up, but we're finding that a lot of people prefer to talk to someone on the phone, because when they call and want information, they have other questions. And so, what we're trying to do is give them an outlet and try to take some of that call volume off our healthcare workers that are trying to conduct the vaccination clinics and try to give citizens an avenue to get more information.
You know, I wonder if, since the online registration process through the state is gummed up, it sounds like NCFAST all over again.
It does.
Whether or not, if they, rather than going through a paper drill, that we can't, through emails, have a fillable in, you know, form, and then have folks email that in, I think that can save some time.
We can certainly look into doing that.
And do it locally. I mean, you know, when the state finally figures out how to get the electrons flowing, then we can transfer data, but anything we can do to speed up the process and make it more accurate. Okay. Is that it?
That's all. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we do not have a closed session this evening. That economic development item has been pushed out. So, at this time, we will take a recess until the 7:00 hour. So, we're in recess.